Hi, welcome to Planning Commission for the March 19th, 2025. We will begin our meeting with a prayer from Commissioner Mitchell and the Pledge of Allegiance from Commissioner Davis.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful to be able to be here this night for our Planning Commission and Land Use Meetings. We're so grateful for the moisture that has blessed our area and we pray that thou continue to bless us with the moisture that we're in need of. We're grateful for our city, we're thankful for those that serve and for the work and diligence that goes into making it such a great place. We're grateful for our mayor and councilmen and for their efforts in trying to see improvements. We pray this time that thou would help us as we go through our items, that we can do so in a calm and friendly environment and cover those things that are needing to be covered. And we thank the minister, pray for and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right, item one on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. There's not a lot we can change.
This is Shil, I move that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
First from Commissioner Shil, a second from Commissioner Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any declarations of extensions or conflicts with anything here?
No.
Okay.
Maybe in the minutes?
Oh, yeah. And we'll look for approval of the minutes from the March 5th, 2025 meeting.
Commissioner Tupow, I make a motion to approve the minutes from March 5th, 2025.
Davis seconds the motion.
First from Commissioner Tupow, a second from Commissioner Davis, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing, item number four. Is there consideration to amend a portion of the city code, more specifically amending portions of the agritourism business overlay zone found in Title IX dash 12D. The applicant is Staley Farms, and we will turn this over to Drew.
You commissioners, everybody here, oh yeah, that's better. I'll just go through the report, you probably had a chance to read it, I'll just read it out and follow it, since this is the only thing on our agenda tonight, so. An amendment request from Staley Farms has been submitted to the city. The applicant is wishing to have the Washington City Code amended for the purpose of eliminating and/or adding to portions of the current Title IX, Chapter 12, Article D, agritourism business overlay zone. The city code allows for anyone within the city to apply for amendments to the city codes. Please find the following proposed changes as shown in red highlighted wording. Those portions with parentheses are proposed additions to the code and those with no parentheses are proposed to be removed. Normally you just do a strike through, but I don't like to strike through, it's sometimes hard to read with that line going right through the words, so that's why I just kind of did it that way and will continue to reference that as we go. So let's just dive right into the code, I'm only going to go to the areas that are changed. Section one, purpose and intent, no proposed changes. Two, overlay zone, no proposed changes. Section three, application procedure, no proposed changes. Section four, use regulations, there are two of them. Add here on number six of the use descriptions, carriage houses and wedding venue. So that's the proposed change to be added to, just add the words wedding venue. I keep wanting to scroll down, but I gotta scroll sideways, bear with me till I get that down. The next one is line 26, where it says recreational activities currently, they want to add also to that family activities. So those are the two proposed changes within the permitted use boxes. I don't know how we want to do this, if you guys want to stop and ask questions on each one, or do we want to go through it all, then come back to each one. I'll let you decide how you want to, as we go, I think that might be better instead of have to go back, so are we good so far?
So they're wanting to add, like on, where's carriage house, they want that and the wedding venue?
And just say a wedding venue, that they can rent out portion of the area for a wedding venue, so someone could rent a particular part of the, you know, the farm to do a wedding in.
Okay.
And you'll look at the chart, they're also proposing that the added wedding venue would have the same acreage-related characterizations as a carriage house. I call myself an old farm boy, so I don't know what a carriage house is, but apparently they're wanting carriage house and wedding venue to have the same acreage-related administration.
I was wondering what a carriage house was.
Commissioner Mitchell knows.
I don't, actually, I was gonna ask the same question.
Commissioner Tupow?
That's the tack room, isn't it? Is that what it is, the tack room, okay.
Does it look like a barn?
Because that's where you park your carriage.
There you go.
Maybe we still have carriages.
There are carriages?
There are, yeah, there are, actually.
Okay, moving on to section B, within the permitted use boxes. Currently, this whole section is in the code, and I'll just read it out, development agreement. If an applicant is wishing to obtain approval for the agritourism business overlay zoning, a development agreement must be proposed along with the zone change request. The development agreement will identify the permitted uses from the chart in subsection A above there, being sought as part of the zone change. The applicant will be required to show how each use will be compatible and in harmony with the underlying zone of agriculture and the surrounding properties. Theoretically, an applicant, application could seek for approval of all the permitted uses allowed in this section, however, it is unlikely that all the uses would be able to be conducted on a given parcel or parcels and still meet the purpose and intent of the base agricultural zone. They want to strike the development agreement out of the code. Any questions there?
I'll just comment quickly on that, so these red lines were performed by the applicant's attorney after meeting and through consultation with the Washington City Attorney and the Washington City Manager, so I'm going to comment on this one. The city does use development agreements with developers largely when there's things like road projects, sewer projects, to define the details related to development of raw land. In light of this zone, we felt that letter D below site development plan accomplished the same thing as, we asked ourselves the question, what would we put in a development agreement for agritourism? There wouldn't be any, you know, city slash developer cooperation for things like sewer and water and all of that, and so we felt like we weren't quite sure what even write there, and we felt that things that would be written there probably are also already required in subsection D below, and so the proposal there is, in light of our city not having much agriculture land left, that we probably don't need to require a development agreement for this type of an application. The other reality is, you'll see there in section B, the ordinance number, 2012 is when this was adopted, and we still haven't received a single application under this ordinance, and so the other idea was, we're trying to see if we can write this in a way that we will actually get an application so that we can get a property properly zoned under this designation.
Thank you. May we go back just to the punch list of exactly up there? Just one question, the difference between family activities and wedding venue, would a family activity be considered a wedding?
I think, I think that in my family, we would certainly call a wedding a family activity.
And then if so, you could do that, A10?
Yeah, that's, I think that's really good feedback for the city council as they look at this, to say, hey, if a catch-all description like a family activity or a recre- both of those to me feel like kind of catch-all descriptions that maybe advise them in your recommendation to look at how they want those to correlate with the specific descriptions such as number six that says wedding venue, that one's very specifically stated.
Or define, try to define family.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, section five, site development regulations. Change in subsection A. Section B is proposing to strike this particular sentence, I'll read it, read it out and then we can read it without it. And the applicant shall prepare a written text that clearly and thoroughly explains the proposed use of the land, including, and this is in the red area, including percentages of the land devoted to agricultural uses and those that will be used for agricultural, agritourism business uses and activities. So striking it then, the sentence would read, the applicant shall prepare a written text that clearly and thoroughly explains proposed use of the land, period. So whether you feel that sentence is needed or not, that, you know, and how would you guys feel about that?
So the reason for that phrase is removal entirely relates to the letter C's removal below. Letter C is the paragraph that requires a correlation between the percentage of land farmed and the percentage of land used for agritourism, agribusiness, and so that phrase in B is only removed because the proposal in C is also proposing to be removed, which is to remove the, in the zoning code, a correlation between the percentage of the farm's acreage and the amount of the farm that gets used for agritourism, agribusiness.
As said, we'll jump right to C, they're proposing to strike allowable area, the sum of all combined agritourism and business activities and uses may consist of a total area not to exceed 30% of the farm's overall gross acreage. The remaining acreage shall be maintained in a manner that is consistent with the farm's main agriculturally produced use or uses and historic condition. The agritourism business uses and the agricultural uses shall be measured in a unit of volume, which would be done by the width times the height times the depth, rounded to the nearest cubic foot based on simple measurements of a use activity, display area or areas. So everybody kind of understand what that is, so if they say a particular use, I'm going to put this, and the area we're using is 100 feet by 100 feet, then you would take that, what percentage of an acre is 10,000 square feet, which is roughly a fourth, you can see that's just what they come up with and calculate everything out to that, so.
Those use, uses that are allow, excuse me, can only be 30% of what the farm's total acreage is.
This would eliminate that. So they're wanting to get rid of that. That's what he's reading, they're wanting to get rid of that 30%.
That's what they want to have taken out, so there will be no, it'll just be 100%.
Yeah, it's not a farm anyway then, is what you're saying.
Yeah, originally, originally there was a tie that basically required that you have some portion of your farm that's a commercially productive agricultural function in order to qualify for the zone. This change is removing that correlation, you could still qualify for agritourism, agribusiness activities as listed in that chart, but you wouldn't be required now to show that you've got an area of land equal to 30% that is agriculturally productive. The primary reason there is to acknowledge that most of the agriculture in our city is no longer agriculture, and so there's, if we're hoping that landowners will come and make applications under this code, that would probably be a hardship that kept them away.
What I don't understand then, why are we doing all this, why don't we just make it a commercial zoning?
You could, the topic tonight is proposed amendments to our existing agritourism overlay. A landowner could certainly come in and just apply for a commercial zone, you're right.
But in a commercial zone, you're not going to be able to have, if they want to have horses and cows and things like that, therefore it's not commercial, that's why it's for the agritourism, is that correct?
There's a heritage slash historical element to our agribusiness, agritourism overlay, there absolutely is, and so you're right, commercial zone could allow uses that are agriculture-related or correlated, but there would be the commercial zone rules and requirements there, right? And this one is trying to look at more of a historical agriculture, historical heritage type use and try to allow there to be a zone that it can fall within and apply within.
So did the city write this? City didn't write this, right?
The city attorney gave them a document, an editable document that contained the city's overlay zone, and then I had a phone call with their attorney, and this is what he proposed, I reviewed it and I told him that I understood the requests and I thought that they were sufficient to be forwarded to the Planning Commission and City Council for consideration.
Moving on, section D, site development plan, these are words to be added, they're just, enhance the sentences, I guess, on each one. Number two, the locations, dimensions, and setbacks of all existing and proposed uses and activities, buildings, fences, indoor walls, and other structures to be included in the, they're adding development and any proposed development. Number four, the locations and dimensions of existing and proposed roads, parking areas and loading areas, traffic circulation patterns, and roads and driveways adjoining and across from the development, and they want to add and proposed development. Oops, slide sideways.
So, talking about the roads and that, are we going to be required to curb gutter sidewalk there, or no? Does this alleviate it?
Talking about Fields Road or roads within the site?
Fields Road.
There is a landowner agreement between the city and the landowner that regards what we call the developer improvements, the curb gutter sidewalk, and so there is a contract out there that the city believes addresses that. We don't require installation of those things. By the time a landowner seeks a new zone designation for their land, what we would do is require those things when they submit applications for subdivision or construction on that land, and so, so even if we were trying to tie that to this, which we aren't, we wouldn't tie it to the time that we're just defining what the zone code law is.
Then continuing that same section, we'll go to subsection F, production. An agritourism business operation shall, unless in the winter season, actively and continuously produce an agricultural product for sale or purchase in the event that the agricultural productivity ceases or becomes improperly maintained, and the section they want stricken out on this proposal is, or falls below the minimum percentage of use as determined by this title. So that would go back to that percentage one that we talked about that they want to have, that's why this, if that, you know, their proposal is saying if that goes out, then we take this out as well, because then there is no correlation to that, so that's why this is kind of tied to that C of allowable area. That is the decision that goes forward. Last one down here on approval process, section B. Such conditions of approval may include, but shall not be limited to, and then they want to add the word reasonable specifications concerning structures, existing and proposed, landscaping, density, ingress, egress, fencing, parking, and lighting. They just want to add the word reasonable specifications.
I think that's ambiguous, reasonable, because what's reasonable to me is different to you, I think it needs to be defined a little bit better.
So reasonable is a legal term that gets used in law and in decisions, but even courts have a hard time defining what reasonable means. The request here is, I'm going to use the, the request here is essentially that the specifications required by the city not be unreasonable. And so what we know is, the city requires a whole litany of different site plans and grading plans and different things through their administrative land use processes already, and those have been upheld and allowed, so we know that anything that looks like a process that we currently require or a specification that we currently require in the same type of areas is going to be a reasonable request. And so what I think this is really speaking to is if it's something that goes beyond any sort of requirement the city uses for other land use applications, then it might be arguable that it's unreasonable, but I think within the scope of what this zone is doing and the scope of what's anticipated they would do, the existing requirements that we require for all the other land use applications that we administer will be sufficient to give the city, you know, every tool we need to request of the landowner if it applies.
This is Commissioner Anderson, so wouldn't it be more appropriate then, instead of using the word reasonable to do like you just said and say, you know, the city shall not, you know, impose unreasonable conditions? Just for clarity.
Yeah, we can do it either way.
Say, well, this supposedly means this, and.
I think we could reject this addition, I don't know that it changes the language of the section at all, so some of the other ones are modern changes, trying to modernize this, the addition of the word reasonable there, the city doesn't get to do unreasonable administration of anybody out there, right? And so we already have that standard that we're subject to, so.
Yeah, word out.
Rather not try to define the word reasonable here, I would just, you know, ask you to determine whether you think that's necessary there to accomplish the goal of trying to modernize this a little bit to the reality of agricultural properties in the city at this time.
Now we're wrapping up the last part of the ordinance, section C on that approval process, the Planning Commission and City Council shall not authorize an agritourism business overlay zone approval unless evidence is presented showing. One, they just want to add, I mean, strike the word project and add the word development on the other side of proposed, so the sentence would read, the proposed development is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan, and this gets to what that's saying, a little more modern setup of the words, no issues really there. Sentence two is basically the same thing, you want to strike the word project and put in the proposed development will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, aesthetics, or welfare of the city. And three, again, we're just changing words out, the proposed development and striking subject site, so the proposed development is physically suitable for the type and intensity of the land use proposed, and that's the final on those. She read, I just, as staff, as I wrote this out and read and reread and put it up against the current one, staff's two major concerns with the proposed changes, the concern centered around the proposed removal of the two sections labeled development agreement and allowable area, which act as what I've just referred to as the backbone of this particular ordinance, if they're removed, the ordinance lacks, I think, some structure. Now, with that said, I appreciate city attorney Seg Miller's talk about the development agreement, made sense on that, especially if he feels strong that that text can help as, you know, be that strength. I think staff, I could definitely back down on development agreement, and with the allowable area, after we've talked, could it be removed? Yes, but like I say, probably my thing is maybe we could consider higher percentages as well. Again, I'm just, I just would feel remiss if I didn't tell you my concerns after being, but again, this is the Planning Commission and the city council's, you know, total decision on this, I just feel as my job is to give you, you know, food for thought on that to keep in consideration, feel free to do whatever you want to, what you feel on your recommendation as the city council will do, of course, in their decision on this proposed changes, so I'll just leave it at that, I'm not here to debate in any side, I'm just going to keep it, I just felt like I needed to, those two things from my perspective, so. If you have any other questions for me, I'll be glad for you up for a public hearing, so.
Drew, this is Commissioner Anderson, the only, this is not really a substance issue, but I think something that might be, goes to city council is, stuff in parentheses is addition and the stuff not in parentheses is deletion, correct?
Correct, yeah, parentheses is what is being proposed to add, and anything just straight red is to be struck.
So I would, I mean, I would just say, like, where you have end of proposal, whatever in blue, I would suggest you put the blue or the parentheses stuff, like with a different color, maybe blue or something, it's just a little, when you're reading through there, you're like, okay, remember parentheses are adding, it's just a little bit confusing when it's all the same color, like what are we deleting, what are we adding? Easier for city council just to look at it at a quick glance and say, all right, you know, blue is adding, red is taking away.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I actually agree with that, I liked going back to the old method where there was a line through what was deleted and then something, it was, just seemed like it was more distinguished. And just to clarify, on allowable area, the parentheses are additions. The 30%, which is just a clarification of the word.
Oh yeah, because that's how the code reads right now, you know, and that's not to add it, that's what it is, yeah.
Are additions.
C is to be struck. That's the only one with those, those are just normal, what would you say, grammar?
That whole.
Yeah, C is proposed to be taken out of the code.
That's my point entirely right there, like, it's still hard to try and figure out, like.
That's what I tried to explain in the beginning, because I.
A color or a strikeout thing would be easier.
Strike lines, to me, I've had a lot of people say, ah, the strike lines get confusing for me, you know, and I just want to make it somewhat, you know, and I knew we would just talk about it, so.
So this is Commissioner Mitchell, I just wanted to verify too, so my understanding is there's currently no win, no zone in our city that is zoned this?
Nobody's ever come and made a zone application, right? And it's been in for 13, well, it will be 13 years by close to the end of the year. It was adopted in October 10th of 2012.
So Staley's not in this right now? Staley Farms is not in this agritourism right now?
No, there's no agricultural property that has this overlay zone on it right now.
Well then, how have they been doing what they've been doing? That's the question I have, I mean, yeah, I mean, we, I mean, we're just trying to get them back into agreement with everything? Okay, that's, that was my question, I thought they already had the agritourism thing. My concern with deleting the 30% or the percentage of this is if somebody else, besides Staley Farms comes in, the neighbors to the south, or whoever, I mean, there's not very many of them out there that are going to get a chance to do this, but what are they going to have to do? I mean, will they have to do anything, or is this just for Staley Farms? I know we want to get other people in here, but is this just for Staley Farms, or are we trying to do something else? Because there's got to be some sort of something, I mean, to keep it a little bit of agriculture, I'm not saying it's 0%, but I mean, you got to keep some cows on there, you got to keep some horses on there, whether it's recreational or not, there still needs to be something there to keep it ag, because like, somebody could just say it is ag. That's my concern, I don't necessarily worry about what they're doing with it, because a lot of people will have an ag business just to lose money, I mean, that, you know. I've got, I've got four horses, you don't make a lot of money with it.
Yeah, I can confirm that that's a true statement. The city is only aware of Staley Farms being an interested property owner to apply under this zone, we're not aware of any others. We agree that there are a few other properties out there that probably could qualify with the zone application under this. One of the feelings when we considered the removal of the 30% correlation is, even in this existing code and the chart of uses. 使用のチャートは、すべてのものは、acreage に連絡する。だから、だから、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、acreage 考察。しかし、あなたは、あなたは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、実際に、commercially、commercially used agricultural function。それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、そして、そして、それは、thirty percent は、それは、それは、それは、あなたが、definition は、thirty percent は、それは、それは、それは、それは、agriculture used は、agriculture 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 used は、
アンドション。私たちが、ちょっと前、ハイシャパラルの前に、その場所で、彼らは、彼らは、彼らは、婚礼会場と花田田。私は、私は、彼らは、彼らは、彼らは、彼らは、彼らは、彼らは、あなたが、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、彼らが trying to do していることは、彼らが、彼らが、彼らが、彼らが、彼らが、ただの例。
私は、私は、私は、私は、彼らは、彼らは、彼らは、彼らは、彼らは、彼らは、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、それは、だから、だから、だから、だから、だから、だから、だから、だから、だから、だから、あなたが、だから、だから、だから、だから、だから、だから、だから、だから、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、但是、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、それは、私は、私は、私は、
はい。私は、私たちが acreage に繋ぐのは難しい。私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、それは、それは、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、あなたが、そして、そして、それは、そして、そして、牛の遺体をそこに置いて、agriculture に。私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、あなたが、それは、それは、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、私は、
So who, yeah, who comes up with those percentages? I mean, we make a recommendation, I guess, as to what, but or recommend some type of change? Does that take place prior to going to the city council?
City council.
Or we just make our recommendations based on what we're seeing right now?
Your purpose tonight is to hold the public hearing. State law requires that new land use laws or changes to zoning laws be subject to a public hearing and then to make a recommendation to the city council. And so some of these comments, I think, are all really good feedback that I'm sure the city council would like to hear and consider as, as they do their job of trying to determine what the code should actually say when it's written. This is not the land use authority, but this zoning code is a land use code per, per definition of state law, which means we have to have a public hearing when we change it.
With that being said, I will open this up for public comment.
Mike Tate, Staley Family Farms. First of all, I want to thank you guys for bringing this up. It's been a very, it's been a very hard situation for my wife. She actually brought this, been working on it since 2009, and you guys were kind of wondering why it took so long and why we didn't apply for it before because when it was originally written in 2013, she started working on 2009, just so tried to put it all together and it took her that long. Well, we always thought that it was kind of written for us, thinking all the, all the code was written for the farm. So we were always trying to be in compliance. And then we realized that we, they, they come to us and they said, well, you guys never actually really applied for it. Well, some other things had come up between then and now. And that's why we wanted, we were trying to reconfigure some of the verbiage in there. So I want to thank you for that. And some of your other questions, we really are a working farm. I know you, you see the balloons, you see the kids, you see the things going on there. But we do, we sell our own beef. We sell eggs from the farm. And you can see that like in our, in our corn maze, at the end of the year, we actually harvest the corn and we, we harvest as much as we possibly can because we, we, our whole purpose on the farm, since I've known Sherry, I've been married, I've been related to the Staley's for about eight years now, our whole purpose is to keep it a farm. We don't want to be a commercial. We don't want to be a lagoon. We want to have people come to the farm and enjoy the experience. We have people literally come every single day from around the world. I mean, France, well, we could say California here, right? Where was France? We have people come from all over and they just step on the farm and they see the animals and for your, we'll always have our horses, we'll always have the pigs, we'll always, and to see chickens walking around pecking on the ground, people will want to experience that. So we feel it our privilege to give back to people this, this experience. But we will always be a working farm. We're not, we're not going to try to commercialize it. We're not going to try to make it look like something that's really not. To my wife's dying breath, it's going to be Staley Family Farms, it's going to be a working farm. It's going to have tractors, it's going to have, it's going to have animals, it's going to be dirty, it's going to be dusty, but that's exactly the way we want it to be. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer a few things for you.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for you. This is Commissioner Anderson. So in answering the question we're having here, what do you think the best way to tie this, this zoning to a, what's, what's the definition to, what's the best way to define that? Agribusiness as opposed to just business?
Well, business could be so many different things. It could, it could be a plumbing warehouse, it could be, but our agritourism is exactly what we're doing. We're, we're actually, I, I, I got semi trucks coming every single day with hay or we're, we're hauling manure one way or another. We're actually in the farm business, good and bad, the flies, the wind, the smells all come with that. And that's what keeps the agritour, the agriculture part of that. We are definitely a farm and we, that is our number one intent, to keep that as, as much as agriculture experience for people to come to experience. And that's, that's our goal.
And I ask that is that the changes, you know, proposing here is to add family activities.
Well, it's two.
To that.
Well, but it's also two.
And to possibly get rid of the percentage of agriculture. So I think it's better to keep a percentage agricultural, you know, agriculture required? Or is it a better way to define that?
I, I think that's one of those terms that if you guys wanted to debate on that, I don't think it has to be one thing or another because it's now, then we're in the process, like now I've got to start counting up my acreage. Now I've got to do 15 acres of corn instead of just five acres of corn. Or I have to plant, oh, now I'm going to have to get beehives to make that percentage or I'm going to have to start planting more tomatoes wherever I'm at to, to try to make that percentage. So it's kind of always an evolving part. It's like, we grow our pumpkins, I don't know if you've ever been there to our pumpkin patch, we grow all five acres of pumpkins, but we literally don't grow enough pumpkins for what we sell. So does that still count as five acres, sorry, five acres of pumpkins even though we bring in 30, 30 cases of full pumpkin totes later? So it's kind of a hard, it's kind of like hitting the, you know, moving target on that. So that's why, that's why we wanted to discuss some of that out, just to, to make it, it's, it's always hard to figure out how to make that number work.
Do all these uses that listed, these 30 uses, do they apply, do they go along with ag or are they conflicting? I think they're pretty much, yeah, they, they don't conflict.
Well, the biggest one, the biggest change is adding wedding venues or family activity, that makes it more ambiguous. But I think, I think you're right. I think the percentage is makes it difficult to comply and difficult to, I think maybe, maybe an answer to it then is that, you know, to, to comply with this, you either have to be actively producing some form of agriculture, whether it's animals or, or crops or, or agricultural themed family activities. I'm just saying family activities, you know, agriculturally themed family activities.
What if we?
I think that's one way to do it.
What if we tied the percentage to their, to the percentage of income from agricultural activities?
Then they have to produce, then they have to produce.
Still, I'm trying to figure it out. I think it's easier just to say either actively producing, you know, crops or, or live, you know, stock of some sort, or.
An agricultural product.
Instead of saying family activities, you say agricultural themed family activities.
Well, and, and then I, I look at the bed and breakfast hotel, 20 room max, maybe that, that's deleted.
So the city council deemed all of those agriculture related, everything in black's been there for 13 years, but you certainly could recommend that they consider, you know, amending that if you wanted to. But yeah, everything in the black was the city council's prior determination as to what might be agriculture related.
So by creating this or making the adjustments to this zoning, what is the advantage to one coming and applying for this type of zone?
So the advantage to this type of zone is for a property that desires to keep and retain a historic agricultural use, that would also allow them to conduct business and commercial activities that retain the agricultural theme. Instead of forcing them straight into commercial, it allows them to, it's a hybrid. It allows them to, to retain the historic use and not lose the right to do that while they also do some, some, some other commercial purposes.
I, my, my thing is just make sure that we keep it agricultural themed somehow. That's, that's the only teeth I want in this, is to make sure that it is still an agriculture. That's, I just, that's the teeth I want in it. It's just so that it, it is some sort of agriculture, so that it doesn't just go away.
Yeah. And, and you know, Thanksgiving point had representatives here, they'd say, Thad, you're wrong. We, we chop and feed that corn every winter and they're right. But, but everybody knows the purpose of that location is not for the chopping and feeding of corn, right? They can get that from much cheaper land elsewhere in the state. The purpose for that is really the, the agritourism and agribusiness related to that holiday type of festival.
But they're, yeah, but they're still, they're still using it for something.
But yeah, there's a, there's a pivot, the water's corn and that corn gets chopped and sold.
So it still has some sort of, I mean, it's teaching these kids where some stuff comes from. So that's a good thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have one more question. What's a carriage house?
Oh, my.
This is actually the real boss.
I'm Catherine Staley, part owners of the farm down there. My, me sitting back here, I'll tell you what the carriage house is. The home I grew up in is 150 years old in St. George, it had a carriage house. So I actually lived with a carriage house. It's where, it's a, it's a, looks like a small barn, but they used to put their carriages in it. And there's still some around, but that's what a carriage house is. And so if there was a carriage house down at the farm, it would look like a little small barn, you know, trying to bring back the old historical part. My, my feeling is I'm sitting back there and what my heart is as I go to the farm. In the summers, Sherry has farm camp and she starts to sign them up in January and they're always full. And then the, the children come and they actually learn how to work. They learn what a hole is and how you use it. And I can tell you, there's some teenagers that don't know that which end of the hole is to be used, but.
What's the minimum age?
12? Three? Yeah. And the three-year-olds just love it, but they come and they learn how to work, they learn about animals, they get the privilege of feeding them and caring for them, cleaning out their pants. I mean, they get the whole thing. And, and there's a waiting list if any, you know, people want to come. But the thing that shocked me is when we started having field trips, when the Washington County brought every, was it fourth graders? Fourth graders out to the farm? And, and we'd have all of these agriculture people come in and teach them about soil and, and Sherry can tell you the rest. But what amazed me was the teachers that didn't know a lot of those things. You know, those of us that have been raised with agriculture, we know those things, but it was amazing what they learned and the joy that they felt in learning it. And I can tell you one thing, you have a lot of kids that cry when their parents want to take them off that dirt hill. How many kids get to play in dirt anymore? I mean, we, we think everyone is like we are, but they're not. And so I see agriculture as staying there as long as those classes are being taught, as long as there's, you know, the animals there. And, and like Mike said, people come in there, they want that feeling because they don't get it out in the commercial world. It's, it's a totally different feeling when you're on the farm. So that's my two bits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry Tate, thank you guys for this discussion. 25 years ago, when we started the corn maze, our first corn maze, you all and my dad and we, you know, we said, we're going to build a corn maze. And he says, nobody's going to come and walk through a blankety-blank corn maze and all the things. And, you know, they say if you build it, they will come. And they came and people have been coming and coming. And as it's grown, obviously things, you know, we used to put a little sign on the corner here or there, and then the signs got thrown in the garbage because we weren't in compliance. We didn't know, we were just having a corn maze, right? And so we've worked along the ways, but I, I feel like it's important to give you a little bit of history of where this came from. So 2009, we were kind of butting heads with the city a little bit and it was obviously a whole different planning commission, whole different city council, whole different staff. And I have, I have traveled all over the country to different states and they have, different states have different laws. And our state wrote our first law, which I was part of in 2008. And we've, so if you want to look up the agritourism laws, just to kind of get an idea where it's gone. Anyway, so at that time, the planning commission, which Rick Schofield was the commissioner, and you know, if you know Rick, Rick and I, but anyway, he said, well, just write up something and dream really big. And so it took us three years. It was from 2009 to 2012 that we finally got it passed. And we were the, one of the very first agritourism ordinances in the state of Utah. And a lot of people have adopted our ordinance. It's a good ordinance. And, and so, you know, as things went on, I didn't apply for it because I didn't think it was written for us, you know? I wrote it, I didn't understand all that. And then Drew got here and he said, you got to apply for this. And then, you know, we, we started the process and it's been hard. It's been a hard process, but we're not opposed to doing it. And I just want you guys to know, like my husband said, the Washington Fields isn't the Washington Fields anymore. It's a beautiful place and we all have, most of us that have been here, we have great memories. And it is so important to me and to our family that we preserve that history of the fields and the farms and what it was. And, you know, we know development's going to come in all around us and we hope we can all work together. And Commissioner Anderson, what you were saying, like it is, it's not just a themat, we want it to be that. We want people, when they come onto the farm, they feel it and you do, and you smell it and you see it. And that's what brings us so much joy when there's so much tourism that comes there now. And they pull in there and I say, well, where did you hear about us? And they're like, well, somebody posted you on TikTok. And I'm like, oh, because we don't have a TikTok account. And anyway, but it's so fun to just listen to them and they stay there for hours and we learn so much about their history and we get to tell them our history and how we're a farming community because that's where we started as a farming community. So I guess if you will, like we want Staley Family Farm to be like one of our little niches that, that when people come to visit Southern Utah, they're going to go to the farm and they're going to experience what a farm is. And obviously we, the percentage thing, you know, that is something that we can discuss, but we have taken a lot of the cows out because we have a lot of beautiful neighbors now that, that wasn't there, they didn't want them there, you know? So we've tried to find the balance between all of that and preserving what, what we feel is, is who we are too. And so, you know, we just appreciate the conversation. We, we want to get a, a good thing and we, we feel like we're a really good thing for our community. We feel like we're something to be proud of. I mean, we, we really do. And I just hope that you guys feel that way if you haven't experienced it. And that was my conversation with Rick Schofield, is we actually invited the commissioners to come and experience the farm because they were all up here trying to decide and not one of them had ever been there. And so we said, why don't we have a night and y'all come? And that changed, and Rick's like one of my biggest advocates now. So I'm just saying, like, it is a good thing and it's, we didn't invent the will on it. It's something that a lot of states have done and like our state tourism are focused heavy on agritourism because we're losing agriculture in the state of Utah and we can't. We have to have some open space and some farms. So thank you. So do you have any questions for me? I just wanted to share the backstory.
Commissioner Anderson, I have a question for you, Sherry. So I, I grew up on a farm and so I understand like what, where you're coming from. And also my kids don't have the opportunity, you know, for that. And so I appreciate the farm for that purpose. But so let me, let me just pose a question to you then. Let's say for, for whatever reason, let's say somehow the Staley's no longer had control of the farm. Let's say somebody else had the farm, okay? What would you want that definition to tie it back to what your vision of what, what you want it to stay as if somebody else had control of it and you guys didn't have control of it? How would, how would you define it? Would you define it by a percentage of, you know, of acreage needing to be producing? Would you define it as many of these things we've talked about? If, because I know that you're, I know what your intentions are and I know what the whole family's intentions are. Let's say that for some reason you guys lost control of it and someone else had control of it. What would you put in here to ensure that your vision gets met?
I, I would think that you would need to produce something. It's really hard with the percentages though, you know, because like right now, 11 acres is parking. We park all our farming equipment out there when we're not using it for a parking lot, but you know what I mean? So I think that you would definitely want something being produced off of there, whether it be a crop.
So how would you write, so how would you write that then? Because we're talking about rewriting your stuff.
Produce a crop? I don't, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I just think it would need something to be produced that is a crop or a animal or, you know, like I said, like Mike said, we, we sell our eggs, we sell a lot of eggs and we, and we raise beef cows there. And we're trying to really get the land where the, where the corrals were that we've taken out to grow a crop again, but the soil needs a lot of help. It's had, you know, 60 plus years of cows on there, so, but.
You want to quantify it or just say that they has to produce livestock or, or crops? Or do you want to try and quantify it somehow?
I don't know. That's why we kind of, I think it needs to be a farm and however we define that or decide how to define it, you know, or, or percentage of it has to be a farm. It's just really hard because when I look at our farm, I can tie every single thing we do into agriculture. You know what I mean?
Could you quantify it by architectural committee?
No, because then it's architectural, it's not, it's not ag. I think that you need to.
So I, I think the original percentage, so if you take, if you take the traditional farm field, which is as, you know, a field on a surface and you say, what is, what have modern farmers done that might produce the same thing with less acreage? And you'd consider, oh, a hydroponic greenhouse where they're, where they're growing both vertically and horizontally. A percentage of acreage is kind of a more archaic concept of farms on surfaces, right? You can imagine a, an agricultural operation that produces most of its value on a pretty small percentage of its acreage. And so maybe you just, maybe you just, and I think it was Commissioner Davis, just say, you know, let's, let's look at that percentage and maybe adjust it to a more modern concept, right? Whether it's 30 or, or 95, just ask the city council to wrestle with what's, what's the right thing for the city. And that might, that alone might be able to retain the language that says you still have to have some productivity. It's always been there. It's just the percentage that I think was mostly the hard part for, for an applicant. And so ask them to keep that language and, and recommend that they adjust that percentage in a direction that's maybe more feasible for modern agricultural activities. Because you've already got the language that, that requires agricultural production in the existing, existing zoning code.
So the, that's, that was my question is the, for it to be agricultural, it still has to be, it doesn't have to produce anything, it can be agricultural, it can be raw land. But in order to be agritourism, it needs to produce something ag.
And say, leave the same language and say not to exceed 98%. That way at least 2% is got a production factor, right? And again, that's where.
It's got to, yeah, I mean, and if they're going to produce something by having the farm, I mean, you're going to have corn maze, you, you know, you are going to use that corn somewhere. They're not going to throw it away.
Right.
Like chickens, I mean, that's what makes it a farm, but I just want to make sure that there's teeth in there so that, like you were saying, if the Staley's don't have it, somebody else just doesn't put up some, some false fronts that look like barns and call it a, and skirt the, and skirt everything. So I, I think the teeth we're putting in it is to help the agricultural.
So what if instead of, what if instead of tying it to, if you can, if you just scroll to that paragraph C and. What if we, we tie it to a percentage activity on the land? I mean, if, if all the activity is, is just family activities and everyone's having parties or whatever, it's not agriculture. But if, but if you're raising chickens and, and having a farm camp and showing kids how to farm and, or there's pumpkins being raised or there's corn being grown or any of those things, then that can, that counts as, you know, majority of the activity is, is farm related or, or part of a farm as opposed to, you know, we're, we're, we're bringing people in and having a concert on a field or something, right?
And, and I can appreciate that too, but again, like when someone comes onto a farm, they're having an agriculture experience.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that would, that would count as farm, is what I'm saying.
That'll count. That's what we're trying to.
I'm just saying it has to be farming related.
Right.
Activities as opposed to non-farming related activities, that's all.
If you look at that section C on the screen that, that's been proposed to just remove all of it, what I'm hearing from the commissioners is a continuing interest to make sure there's language that requires that the historic use remain. So the first sentence is really saying that the agri business or agritourism activity must, must not exceed a certain percentage of the farm's overall acreage. The second sentence is what I hear you asking for. I'll just read it. The remaining acreage shall be maintained in a manner that is consistent with the farm's main agriculturally productive uses and historic condition. I think that's what all of you said.
That's what we need to leave alone for another.
And so, and so maybe your recommendation is just to adjust that 30% correlation to a number that's more consistent with the reality of the, the small amount of agricultural acreage we still have left in our city.
Don't even talk about acres, just talk about activity on, you know, it's got to be agriculturally farming related activity and leave that sentence in there, the second sentence in there. I think that's what we need to do. Or you include, you know, when we're talking about adding, what is it? Family activities? I think we add the word, you know, agriculturally related family activities.
And I think we added that family activities because we do all that anyway. So we didn't know, I guess we didn't maybe choose the right words, but it was, everything on there, we're pretty much already doing except the, the bed and breakfast things were, and I don't foresee us doing that, so.
Just thinking how to protect your vision.
Right.
You know, I think you.
I appreciate it.
You put agriculture on the front of family activities and that helps.
Yeah.
You get rid of the percentages and stuff, you get rid of the, the formula down there, you leave the middle sentence and then you just say, you know, the activity on, on the farm has to be agricultural activity, some sort of agriculturally related activity. I think you've got it.
What's an activity?
It's all.
Oh, we're, we're going to split hairs. We've split all of Thad's.
Brush the Highlander cows.
Are you asking the mountain bikes as an agricultural activity, Commissioner? Are you asking the mountain biking is an agricultural commi, activity? Okay.
We can put a trail in. You need, have anything else for me?
Thank you. There's anyone else who'd like to speak to this? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing of this item. So we need a motion. Let me discuss this for over an hour. I think, I think we send it to city council and let them figure out the percentages on it because I.
Yeah, I think if we remove C, then it makes it ambiguous because I don't know how to tie it to ag.
Do we, do you want to address that item where the family activity and the wedding had different acreage requirements? Wedding venue is N and N and family activities is N and P? Make them consistent.
Well, you come in late, you're not on this voting one. He is. No, you're, you're on it.
Both are.
No, I'm just saying whoever makes the motion, but I mean, you come in late and he was already in the middle of this one, so.
Well, let me just throw a suggestion that might help you guys. You, I don't know if you want to go through each one and come to a, you know, I'm just saying, instead of trying to pick out, if you want to just sit each one and say, yeah, leave that one, no, I mean, I'm just trying to help you unless you want to just try to tackle it with one motion and then have people amend the motion or, which will probably end up happening.
Since I can't make a motion, I'll at least.
So the alternate can make motions, make motions, the alternate doesn't get to vote. And so.
Okay.
And so Commissioner Anderson wasn't here when the meeting convened, so Commissioner Davis is failing that alternative.
Yeah, after this, you won't be the, you'll be the alternate after.
Commissioner Anderson's in the alternate chair.
Make the motion.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a mo, this is Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of consider, consideration to amend a portion of the city code, more specifically amending portions of the agritourism business overlay zone as found in Title 9-12D with the recommendation that we, we use the changes as, as proposed with the exception that the item 26 that adds family activities be changed to agricultural family activities.
Change the acreage on that one too, to match.
And that. And that.
Item six.
This one. That nine dash twelve D dash five, section B, that we. We, we, we delete the, we delete the terms, we delete the reference to percentage of land, but we leave the reference of land devoted to agricultural uses. So I think the rest of that sentence stays. Just get rid of the percentage portion of it. And then section C, we delete the first sentence relating to percentages as is recommended, but we leave the second sentence that says the remaining, uh, that says that the, basically the land shall be consistent with the farm's main agriculturally productive uses and historic condition. We leave that part and then we delete the third sentence as is recommended.
What were you doing with the first sentence? Sorry, I wasn't clear.
First sentence is deleted. The third sentence is deleted. It's the second sentence that needs to remain other than the, where it says, where it's talking about acreage. Just the second sentence needs to remain saying that the manner, it, it needs to be consistent with the farm's main agriculturally productive and historic condition. That part needs to remain.
Acreage shall re.
Handle of all that.
Acreage shall be maintained in a manner. I think you can reword that.
Yeah, basically just reword that sentence to say that it's consistent with the farm's main agriculturally productive uses and historic condition. That we want to, to maintain in there. And other than that, we, we recommend approval of the rest of it. Senate City Council for consideration.
What about matching the, matching the acreage requirements for six for the wedding venue and the family activities? Oh, that was.
Item six, the acreage percentage or the, yeah, what's.
To have a wedding, you gotta have twenty acres.
Allowed in five and ten acres is different in family activities.
To have a wedding.
Yeah, that we, we match, and then we match wedding, wedding venue for both sections to be the same for.
For agricultural family activities, then it gets rid of the wedding venue.
For, what is it? For.
But you said agricultural family activities, that would, that would not be a wedding.
Yeah, just so we match, so we match wedding venues and family activities to be the same, um, same on both, both sections.
If I wear my overalls to a wedding, does that make it agricultural?
You bet.
The groom has to wear a cowboy hat.
So we have a motion. We have a second.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I second.
First by Commissioner Anderson, the second by Commissioner Mitchell. Individual voting. Commissioner Schell.
Can I just pause you guys before you do that? What are we doing with reasonable? That was not addressed. I hate to go by.
I'm sorry. In adding to that, Bonnie, the word reasonable is being deleted.
What's that? You don't, you, you recommend it doesn't go forward. Okay.
Forward as, as added.
Yeah, because I know we talked about.
Section, Bonnie, it's section nine dash twelve D dash nine under the approval process. Section B recommending not including the word reasonable.
Seconded the motion.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I second.
You'll have to say you're okay with.
And okay with that amendment.
Commissioner Schell.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuppo.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. This will go to city council with a recommendation of approval. So Adam five is adjournment. Look for a motion to adjourn. Planning Commission.
Commissioner Mitchell, I move that we adjourn.
Ag of that.
I'm first by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Schell. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We will start the land use authority here shortly. Meeting is adjourned, we will start the land use authority here shortly. Land use authority meeting for March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Item one on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Look for a motion.
Commissioner Tuppo, I make a motion to approve the agenda for March nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
So I have a first and a second on the approval of the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number two is the approval of the minutes for the land use authority meeting from March fifth, twenty twenty five.
Commissioner Tuppo, I make a motion to approve the minutes from March fifth, twenty twenty five.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, item number three, declaration of extensions and conflicts. Does anyone have any on this?
No.
Okay. Item four A is a final plat amendment for the Sunrise Valley Industrial Park Phase Two. Partial amended amendment A subdivision located at Countryway and Smelter Drive. Application is Red Waters Industrial Development LLC. I will turn this over to Eldon.
Thank you, Land Lu, Land Use. Tongue twister there. The reason for this amendment is to split lot thirty three into two lots. No other changes are being made at this time. Staff has reviewed the proposed amended final plat and finds it conforms to the I two zoning of this development. The subdivision also remains in compliance with the subdivision ordinance of the city. Staff recommends the land use authority approve Sunrise Valley Industrial Park Phase Two Partial Amendment A based on the following original findings and subject to the following conditions stated in the report. I am happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So each lot will have its own utilities as far as sewer, water, electrical.
Correct.
We're not gonna, okay, we'll piggyback on it.
No, they'll be required to pull in separate utilities.
Is there a reason the setbacks don't continue around thirty three B like they do thirty three A?
If you're referring to that dotted line, that's a, uh, we don't list setbacks on the, on the plats.
That is easement, easement, okay.
Public utility easement there.
Is there an explanation, Eldon? I think what he was asking is why does thirty three B not have it across the the back and the two sides of thirty three B that don't show it? Was that an oversight or is that that the intent?
Yeah, where they do border another lot, thirty three B does butt up against the other subdivision.
Yeah, as as part of the development on that thirty three A, we're extending utilities from Countryway up and then out to Smelter Drive so that we can move our water main and have access for our sanitary sewer. There's no, there's no need for us to continue to extend utilities along the backside of thirty three B. It would just go into an additional lot over there, so. Coming along the back of thirty three A and then down that common lot line to tie it back out to Smelter Drive.
That's consistent with the change. City Council performed a year or two ago. We used to just require blanket utility easements on all four corner foursides and the city council went away from that. And so this would pursuant to John's explanation, it shows, it shows the easements and the locations that the city has or intends to have utilities be located.
Do you guys have any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, I will open this up to public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this? Okay, we'll close this public hearing portion. Um, do you guys have any questions for the applicant or we'll look for a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve final plat partial amendment to Sunrise Valley Industrial Park Phase Two Partial Amendment A subdivision located at Countryway and Smelter Drive, subject to the findings and conditions in staff report.
GLI second.
I'm first from Commissioner Tuppo and second Commissioner Shill, individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
My voice isn't.
Aye.
Commissioner Shill.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tuppo.
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. This is approved, thank you. Item four B is amended final plat approval for Simister Estates subdivision located at one thirty eight West thirty nine thirty South. Application is Stephen Simister and I'll turn this over to Eldon.
The reason for this amendment is to adjust the property lines separating lots one and two. No other changes are being made. You can see lot one is is turning into a Utah shaped lot. It used to just be a straight line across there and they're jogging that, creating that depth there. Is where the change is. Staff has reviewed the proposed amended final plat and finds it conforms to the RA half zoning of this development. Subdivision also remains in compliance with the subdivision ordinance of the city. Staff recommends the land use authority approve the Simister Estates amended subdivision based on the following original findings and conditions as stated in the report. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Is this adjustment to allow them access to thirty eight thirty South Street on both properties? They see that it's down the center of that. Can they have access off that road? Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions for Eldon? Okay, this is a public hearing, I'll open it up for public comment. Does anyone in the audience like to speak to this? I will close the public portion, public comment portion of this meeting and look for a motion or any further discussion.
I might just ask one question. I think it's mostly directed at the staff level review. Note six of the general notes says a fifteen foot landscape landscape strip will be required along all street frontage and then there's in parentheses install privacy wall back fifteen foot minimum. I'm not sure I know what that parenthesis language is referring to there. And so we may just look at that on staff review of the Mylar and decide what what that means or whether it means anything to us. I don't, I don't know.
It's a dou- double frontage lot there and on that main corridor, we want to maintain that fifteen foot beautification landscape strip.
With a wall at the back.
Correct, so that wall needs to be held to the back side of that fifteen foot, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion? Up or down, make one.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I'll make a motion that we approve. Item four B, the amended final plat approval of the Simister Estates subdivision located at one thirty eight West thirty nine thirty South with the findings and conditions as noted in staff report.
Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
Thank you, I have a first from Commissioner Mitchell and a second from Commissioner Tuppo, individual voting, Commissioner Tuppo.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Shill.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. Item four C is a final plat partial amendment for the Kent Minor subdivision subdivision located at twenty one ninety one East Washington Dam Road. The applicant is Seamus Egan and I will turn this over to Eldon.
If you remember, this item was tabled during the February fifth land use meeting to give the applicant time to do a zone change. Which you heard a couple of weeks ago, council did approve that zone change. We're now ready to move forward with this amendment. Each lot on the proposed subdivision conforms to the zoning requirements. No other changes are being made. This this was being done to being in conformance with adjustment that was done at the county lot split. We're updating the plat so that it will conform. And no other changes are being made at this time. Staff recommends the land use authority approve the Kent Minor partial amendment A subdivision based on the findings and conditions as stated in the report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thanks, Eldon. All right, I'll open this up for the public hearing portion of this, if anyone would like to speak to it. Okay, I will close the public portion. And look for a motion.
Mrs. Shill, I'll make a motion. Uh, I move that, uh, not go to the city council, correct?
No, we're we're privy.
I would move that we approve the amended final plat for Kent Minor located at twenty one ninety one East Washington Dam Road with the terms and or the, the conditions and
Findings.
Findings. Terms and conditions, all that good stuff.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
I'm first by Commissioner Shill, second by Commissioner Anderson, individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shill.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Tuppo. I'm Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. So that passes. Uh, item five is adjournment, look for a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Anderson, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
I'm first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.